Twinsburg Board of Education. Today is Wednesday, April 1st, 2015. And Mr. Aho is absent tonight, so standing in for him is Mr. Welker, who will be our secretary for the meeting. And Mr. Welker, I would like to ask you to please call the roll.
Mr. Stuber?
I'm here.
Mrs. Kane Griswell?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Tara Waldron?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Now, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I've just got to say, every time we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I hear voices out there. And tonight, I think you guys win the prize. I heard more of the younger voices tonight saying the Pledge of Allegiance nice and loud. So, thank you very much. That's great, guys. Bear with me as I get used to my new eyes. I had Lasik surgery last Friday, but I still need readers, so I'll see if this works. You are all now blurred. Again, I want to thank you all for attending, and I've got to slide these down a little bit. I do wish to address tonight a topic regarding the draft of the state biennial budget, which is known as House Bill 64. And for those who have attended or watched board meetings regularly, I apologize if I sound like a broken record, because you've heard me voice this concern frequently over the past few months, and it's a topic that I've talked about publicly since I've been on the board. Unfortunately, it is a topic related to the state budget that is most concerning for our district. And the specific topic that I'm going to talk about is back on the table again, and that is the reduction of the TPP reimbursement funds. The proposed state budget over the next two years would reduce the TPP reimbursement to our district by over $1 million. A significant source of revenue to school districts across the state had been the tangible personal property tax, or TPP. And back in 2006, this TPP tax revenue was worth approximately $9.8 million to the Twinsburg School District, or almost 25 percent of our revenue. However, in 2006, House Bill 66 took effect, and it eliminated the TPP tax and replaced it with a state-controlled tax known as the Commercial Activity Tax, or also known as the CAT tax. Although the state has provided some reimbursement for the lost TPP tax revenue, the intention of this legislation has been to eventually eliminate all of the tax revenue that was originally derived from the TPP tax. Ultimately, what has happened is the state has replaced the TPP tax, which was local money to the districts, with a CAT tax, which is now controlled by the state. And through this process, they've redirected these local funds away from local school districts and into the state's general fund. Since House Bill 66 was enacted, Twinsburg has seen a decrease of over $3 million in the reimbursement of this TPP revenue. Our district has been trimming costs for many years now, and soon after House Bill 66 was voted into law back in 2005, the district's administrative team began presenting this information to the public and began trimming what we referred to as the low-hanging fruit. And as we've traveled through these past years, the cuts have become deeper. During 2010 and 2011, the district enacted staff reductions through attrition, and that was the result of retirements and resignations, which were worth over $1 million, along with some other operational cost reductions. Then, the Operational Change Plan was implemented during 2012, 2013, and that had a neutralizing effect on the TPP revenue that had been phased out. And those actions combined were good enough at that time to stabilize the reduction of our cash reserve. Back on March 2nd of this year, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Aho, and myself met with Representative Christina Rogner from our House District, and we talked about the proposed state budget and the negative impact that it will have to our district. Also, early in March, this board submitted a formal letter to the governor, which expressed our concern regarding school funding and specifically the topic of the TPP reimbursement. Later this month, April, several districts in this region will send their superintendents, treasurers, board presidents, and vice presidents to a meeting that will occur with Representative Rogner, Representative Slavy, and Senator LaRose. And at that meeting, we will discuss the proposed state budget and generally, funding for education. And while the board and superintendent have been busy advocating for our district, it's now time that we ask you, the taxpayers of our community, to reach out to our state representatives. This is, then, a call to action. And we are asking for your help by contacting our legislators in Columbus. During the week of April 13th, the House Finance Committee is scheduled to accept a substitute version of the budget bill. And between now and then, we need to be very vocal with those who represent us in Columbus to ensure that they are responsive to our community and this school district. Later in the superintendent's report, Mrs. Powers will provide some additional detail regarding how you can actually reach out to these representatives and where you will be able to find additional information, including some sample information and letters that you can pull from our website and use to send to our representatives. The financial impact of the state budget for our district is literally hanging in the balance, and it's vital that we voice our concerns with the appropriate legislators. We will continue to report on this issue as the weeks move forward and keep the community informed as the state budget process progresses. On a much happier note tonight, we are once again reminded of why we are here. And I'm no longer talking about wintertime and blizzard bags or... What are we doing Friday, Mrs. Powers?
I think it's a day off.
It's a day off, okay.
For all of us?
Yeah. All except the board. Tonight, we're going to recognize students for their achievements. So, I do want to have a special welcome to the staff, students, and the parents and families from Bissell Elementary and RB Chamberlain Middle School. I know that you guys are here tonight for some special recognition. So, without further delay, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families. Thank you for being with us this evening. Mr. Stuber, I don't think I need to remind our students that spring break begins at the end of the school day tomorrow. I think they're very excited about that. I know the staff is as well. Seems like it's been a really long winter, and I know we're looking forward to a nice spring break, for sure. Before we get to our students, there are a couple of things, and we do have some special guests that are here for a special presentation. But before we get to that, I just want to piggyback on Mr. Stuber's comments, because as you can tell by his very strong comments this evening, this whole proposed governor's budget bill is of a huge concern to our school district. Every two years, we kind of hold our breath to see what's going to happen in Columbus. And imagine a reduction in our budget of $1.1 million. And that's a significant impact to the school district. And the one thing that I have learned over my time here as superintendent is, you know, I'm up and down to Columbus a lot. I think my car can go there by itself, for that matter. But the legislation really listens, probably to a much better degree, when our parents and community members step up to the plate and send a letter or make a phone call. Of course, I continue to advocate on behalf of our students, and I will continue to do that, as well as the members of the Board of Education. But when Representative Rogner or Senator LaRose hears from members of our community, they really take a listen to that, and they really consider that even to a bigger degree. And so, what we would like to launch this evening is a grassroots campaign to help address the proposed budget bill. And I wanted to show you a couple of things that might be helpful if you are interested in helping us in this effort. On our district website, and Mrs. Farthing has called it up here on the screen, you'll see that we've added a news article on the homepage. It's called "A Critical Call to Action", and it just summarizes a little bit of what we're asking you to do. If you click on that link there, it'll take you to my superintendent's page. And every month, I try to keep our parents and community members up to date with some interesting things. Last month, we began to talk about the proposed budget bill. And again, this month, you'll see that we're talking about the proposed budget bill again. But in the text of my message, I'm asking our community members, and especially our parents, if you would be so kind as to communicate to our state representatives about this proposed budget bill and the impact it's going to have on our school district, unless something happens in Columbus. If you click on that link that's embedded in, actually, two spots in my message, it takes you to a template, a letter, that you're more than welcome to use, because it specifically states the facts about our Twinsburg City School District and what specifically would happen if we don't get some movement in the positive direction on the budget bill. And if you go to the very bottom, keep scrolling down there, that's the contact information for all the legislators that need to hear from us. Obviously, Christina Rogner and Frank LaRose, our House of Representatives and our state senator, are the two members of legislation that really pay attention to our school community. But what I've learned over time is it's more than just those two. And often, if they're not directly involved in that committee work, we need to use them as our liaisons to those members of the House and Senate who are directly going to make some pretty significant decisions on the forefront of committee work. And so, those individuals listed there are the ones that we need to reach out. If you're comfortable making a phone call, there's the phone numbers. If you would prefer to send a letter, there are their addresses. And again, the letter, Jen, if you'd go back up to the top. That's just a template. Feel free to use it if you'd like. Again, we embedded into that letter the correct numbers, the dollars and cents, the impact to our school district. And so, I'm trying to make this as easy and as effortless as possible for members of our community. And of course, if you need more information, please don't hesitate to call me at the board office. Although it is spring break, we'll be there. And working on next year, as a matter of fact. So, please feel free to give me a ring if you have any questions or if you need more information about any of this. It's very important to our school district to really motivate our families and our community to jump on this. And please communicate your interest in our legislators making the right decisions for our kids. Thank you, Jen. Secondly, Board of Education, one of the things that I heard today is that House Bill 138 was introduced into committee work. And this is an important House bill, and members of my staff, I've already been communicated about this. House Bill 138 potentially would put a pause on all of this park testing for the second part, the EOIs, the park testing that'll begin on April 20th in our school district. One of the things that we have been very, very, very concerned about, if you've been paying attention to much of what I've said lately here and in my superintendent's comments, is that we are very, very concerned about the amount of time our kids are tested here in our school district. Well, the legislation is finally starting to listen to some reason, and now there's an emergency House bill that has just gotten into committee. And so, much like this budget bill, if you are interested in reaching out to the legislators about this topic, the contact information is there for you. Please give them a ring or send them a letter, an email, and let them know that you're supporting this House bill. It's House Bill 138, and again, this emergency House bill, if passed, would potentially allow the district to seek a waiver for participation in the April end-of-year park assessments. It's a big deal for the school district. I hope we can count on your assistance. The more they hear from us, hear from Twinsburg, hopefully, some good decisions will be made in Columbus. Mrs. Farthing, our Director of Curriculum, has been very busy, not only working with our staff about curriculum matters, but she's been planning some really great workshops for our parents. And many parents last evening participated in a workshop called "Your Child's Brain: Uncharted Territory", and that was presented by Dr. Lisa Regal. And Dr. Regal will be back here in our district on Thursday, April 16th, to present the second part of this workshop. So, parents, if you want to mark that on your calendar, again, it's "Your Child's Brain: Uncharted Territory", Thursday, April 16th. And this is for parents for kids in grades kindergarten all the way through grade 12. Some really great information about the development of your child and how that development impacts their success in school. So, we invite you to participate on April 16th. And then, finally, my last announcement. The Twinsburg Tiger Fit Fun Run is right around the corner, Saturday, April 25th, at 10 o'clock a.m. at Tiger Stadium. This is a great event. It's been growing bigger and bigger and bigger every year. One year, we had snow, and we still had a big crowd out. It's a lot of fun. April 25th, I hope the snow is long gone by then. There is a registration flyer on our district website, on our Flyer Central link. And if you pre-register before April 16th, you will get a free t-shirt. So, there you go. So, please pre-register for the Tiger Fit Fun Run. It's scheduled for Saturday, April 25th, at 10 o'clock a.m. at Tiger Stadium. And if you are participating, we ask that you bring a canned fruit item, because those items will be going to the Emergency Assistance Center to support our partnership with them. You know, they do such wonderful work through our Pause on Child Hunger here in the school district. So, anything that we can do to support the Emergency Assistance Center, because it comes back to us many, many times over for students who participate on our Pause on Child Hunger program. So, that's enough from me this evening, Board of Education. We have some very exciting news to share. You know, last time we met, I was telling the community how much we appreciate and are held in great debt to our city of Twinsburg and Reminderville and Twinsburg Township. And this evening, we have more to be appreciative of the city of Twinsburg, and most specifically, the Twinsburg Police Association. For consecutive years now, the Twinsburg Police Association has been providing teacher grants to members of our staff. And this evening, Chief Noga and Officer Kopnisky and Officer Frusella are here to present this year's teacher grants. So, I'd like to ask Chief Noga to come forward. And I would like to also ask Officer Kopnisky and Officer Frusella, as well as my five building principals, who are here to support our teachers this evening, if you'd please come forward. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, great. You know, the Twinsburg Police Department, we are very blessed to have the support and the trust of our community. And we're mindful of that in the fact that we feel we have an obligation to give back to our community as well. The Twinsburg Police Association is our charitable and social arm of the police department. It's totally independent. It was founded in 1959 by police officers on this department, way back when. It went dormant for a while and then came back in strong in the last 10 years. So, we are very, very happy to be here tonight to pass these awards out, these grants out, to our outstanding teachers. I'm here on behalf of our president, Dan Fido. Dan has been on the disabled list since March 13th. He took one for the team during our, well, non-victory against the teachers in the Teachers versus Safety Forces basketball game. Although, we did raise almost $2,200 as a result of that game. And, yeah, thank you. Absolutely. And those proceeds were split between the boosters, Twinsburg Baseball, and DARE. So, it gives us an opportunity to continue to fund two great programs. So, we want to recognize our teachers tonight. Our first teacher from Wilcox Primary is Elise Hannah. Congratulations. From Samuel Bissell Elementary, we have Deborah Flanagan-Gadsen. This next teacher is special to me. She is currently one of my son's teachers, from George Dodge Intermediate School, Kelly Reek. And from Chamberlain Middle School, Michelle Harris. And from Twinsburg High School, Sharon Masenko. I think it's safe to say that, for everyone in this room, somewhere along the line, there's been one or two, hopefully, more teachers who have made a difference, teachers like these down here. And we are proud to recognize them for their efforts. Congratulations.
Chief Noga and Officer Frusella and Officer Kopnisky, I know I speak on behalf of the Board of Education to thank you for this wonderful recognition of some outstanding teachers. As you said, we have so many wonderful administrators and educators here in our school district, and we certainly do appreciate when they're recognized like this. So, thank you for recognizing them. And again, thank you for all that you do to support our school district every single day. We do appreciate that. Okay, well, now it's time to celebrate some outstanding students. And we're going to begin by asking Mrs. Johnson to come forward, because we have outstanding students from Samuel Bissell Elementary School. And Mrs. Davis is going to come forward, and Mr. Welker's going to help. And, boys and girls, as your name is called and you're recognized this evening, if you would please come on up forward. And you want to come up to the stage, be careful you don't trip on the step. And you want to shake hands with Mrs. Davis. She has a nice pin for you. And then, of course, Mrs. Bissell... Mrs. Bissell, oh my goodness. I think she thinks she is Mrs. Bissell. Mrs. Johnson of Bissell. I would like to congratulate you. And then, you have a nice certificate, and Mr. Welker will make sure that you're standing where you need to be here. And then, we're going to ask you to please remain up here until all the children from Bissell are recognized, because then, we're going to take a nice photo of everybody once we're at the end. So, the Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set these students apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. So, to begin with our second graders, our first student is from Mrs. Holiday's class, and it is Nicole Belfior. Next, from Mr. Harrison's class, we have Jackson Held. From Mrs. Springer's class, we have Ally Hudson. From Mrs. Ziska's class, we have Melena Spencer. And from Mrs. Doyle's class, we have Gavin Varnum. Moving on to our third graders, from Mrs. Angler's class, we have Mason Allen. From Mrs. Rinaldo's class, we have Trenton Holland. From Mr. Labus's class, we have Emily Moore. From Mrs. Cardeman's class, we have Liana Tovmasian? Did I say that right? How do you say that?
Tovmasian.
There you go. Congratulations. And from Mrs. Dorlan's class, we have Sarah Turrentine. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding Students of the Month from Bissell Elementary School. Boys and girls, if you just want to stand nice and straight for just one more minute and hold your certificates up in front of your stomachs, because I know your moms and dads would like a really nice photo of you. Thank you, and congratulations, one more time, for these wonderful students. Thank you, boys and girls. You may be seated. At this time, Mrs. Johnson would like to talk to us about two outstanding members of her staff. We're celebrating Staff Members of the Month.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to recognize our students. They look so beautiful and handsome tonight. I'm glad to see you all were able to come out tonight. I look forward to having lunch with you tomorrow, so that's exciting. Tonight, we're going to also recognize Staff of the Month. If we could have Ms. DeCiana come to the front? And I would like to share some words about Ms. DeCiana with you. It says, "It is an honor to work with Ms. DeCiana, art teacher at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. After decades of educating children, Ms. DeCiana continues to demonstrate a passion for teaching the techniques of various forms of art and the appreciation of all art and beauty. Ms. DeCiana maintains high expectation for her learners and provides a consistent and structured environment for her classes of 25-plus students. She delivers meaningful lessons within a 40-minute period and takes time to know her students on a personal level, which is extremely impressive, given that she is responsible for hundreds of students in two buildings. It is a privilege having this staff member on our team and an honor to have Ms. DeCiana as a friend and a colleague, and she was nominated by two teachers, Mrs. Haas and Ms. Belinski." So, congratulations, Ms. DeCiana. And I hope Ms. DeCiana doesn't mind, but Ms. DeCiana is retiring this year. And so, we are going to miss her greatly. We appreciate all of her talents and all the work that she does with the students, and we appreciate the opportunity to allow the students to be creative. So, thank you so much for your leadership. At this time, if Mrs. Berry can come to the front? I would like to share some words with you about Mrs. Berry. This says, "I would like to nominate Mrs. Berry for Staff of the Month. Mrs. Berry is an instructional assistant with Mr. Eustace's class. She has been a part of the Twinsburg City Schools for many years. Mrs. Berry is kind and thoughtful of others. She cares for the students in her class like they are her own children. She wants only the best for each and every one of them. They all know they can go to her if they are feeling happy or sad. Mrs. Berry is also helpful to our staff members. For example, we know we can count on her to step in, to set up and serve when we have special lunches for days like Career Day and Field Day. She is part of the Career Day Committee, and she is also our ever-important staff lottery queen. She is our good luck charm, and it is my pleasure and honor to nominate her for Staff of the Month." And that was written by Mrs. Haynes. Congratulations, Mrs. Berry. Congratulations to both of our Staff of the Month. At this time, I would like to share some building highlights with you. If I could have the four students from Ms. Belinski's class come forward? So, just to share with you a little bit about their project, I'm not going to tell you their names because I'll have them introduce themselves. But this was written by Ms. Belinski, she couldn't be here tonight, but she says, "This is the first year for the Cumulative Independent Novel Project for Guided Reading. For the end of each Guided Reading novel, the students have either a short quiz or writing piece that they have to do." So, she says, "I couldn't imagine giving my students another quiz or writing assignment, so instead, I needed to be able to gauge their understanding of the book, of the content, of some of the skills that they had to work on this quarter. So, what I decided to do was to give them the opportunity to complete a project, which was fun, engaging, and so amazing." It came from amazing.com listing Cumulative Independent Novel Project for Guided Reading, and that's how it was born. She says, "I've tried to break it down as simply as possible and give them an assignment page. They make a book cover, they write a summary, they select quotes, and they write a review, and even more. They are actually doing more than something like a test would require, but they realize that they're loving and learning what they do each and every day." So, at this time, we will have them present to you.
My name is Bonnie Modi. I'm in Ms. Belinski's class in third grade. The book I read was Mudshark by Gary Paulson. Mudshark is a very cool kid. Find out how Mudshark solves the mystery of the missing erasers. Product details: Age range: 8-13. Grade level: 3rd to 7th grade. Pages: 83 pages. Publisher: Scholastic. Quotes: This is one of my favorite quotes in the book. One day, a girl wrote something amazing on a blackboard when I was in the room setting up a new crayfish tank. I stopped and looked at the board. It was vivid and meaningful in its own way as any painting I'd ever seen in any museum, and then the teacher erased it."
Nice job, Bonnie. Third graders doing book reviews, wow.
My name is Matthew Radicelli. I'm in Ms. Belinski's class, third grade, and the book I read was Mudshark by Gary Paulson. Review: I thought this book was cool, adventurous, and mysterious. It was fun to read, there were some funny parts and there were some rude parts, but it was still cool. Ranking: This is the rank I thought my book was from the best five books I've read. Number one, My Life as a Book. Number two, Mudshark. Number three, Diary of a Wimpy Kid. Number four, Rules. Number five, Loot. Quotes: How do you know it was me?
What's his favorite quote? How do you know it was me?
My name is Kavya Balaji, and I'm in third grade in Ms. Belinski's class. The book that I read was Half a Chance by Cynthia Lord. When Lucy moves to New Hampshire, she enters a photography contest judged by her dad. Can she face lots of problems and come to a solution in time? Product details: Pages: 218. Ages: 8-13. Level: T. Grades: 3-7. Publisher: Scholastic. My favorite quote from this book was, "Sometimes I hope so is the best answer you will get."
I love that quote.
My name is Julia Bazarov, and I'm in Ms. Belinski's class in third grade. The book I read was The Hundred Dresses by Eleanor Estates. Wanda says she has a hundred dresses, but nobody believes her. Wanda wears the same old blue dress every day. Does Wanda really have a hundred dresses? Product details: Ages: 8-11. Grades: 3-6. Level: P. Pages: 79. Publisher: Louis Slavkin. One of my favorite quotes is, "Sure, a hundred dresses all lined up in the closet."
Nice job. So, these students did a really nice job, and actually were able to show their understanding of the book and even more through their projects. So, I'm so very proud of them. When they came down and wanted to share this with me, I said to myself at that time, wow, this is something that not just Mrs. Johnson needs to see, this is something that everyone else needs to see, and that's why they were invited to come tonight. So, I'm very proud of them, they're doing a wonderful job, and I'm just excited to just show them off and show how they really get into a book and can tell you all about the book and their own experiences with that book. So, nice job, students. Give them another round of applause.
Boys and girls, it's so exciting to see that you love to read, because reading can take you on so many adventures. So, thank you for sharing that wonderful work that you did in Mrs. Belinski's class with our community this evening. And I know there are a lot of moms and dads and grandmas and grandpas and boys and girls sitting home saying, boy, either I remember reading those books when I was a child, or, boy, I'd like to read that book right now. So, thank you for sharing your excitement about reading with our community, and it's so nice that you're here this evening with your families. And thank you to Mrs. Johnson and the staff for being here as well. Mr. Stouver, at this time, we would need to make a switch. We have RB Chamberlain students and staff members to be recognized in the lobby, and of course, we have a seating capacity that we need to adhere to, so I will let you make the announcement.
I would allow you to please, probably got homework to do before the break, so now's the time to go ahead and take off. Thank you very much for coming tonight. If you could use the exits back there, and then we'll let the RBC guys come in. Thank you very much for coming.
2200. Well, it might be worse now, I don't know. This is now 2020, and this is 2015. Two minutes per eye. I mean, it was not, and I was real squeamish about the whole thing, but I'll tell you, Valium does wonders for that.
Yeah, I'm a mess. I have like bifocal contacts in right now.
Oh, yeah.
And I can't, I don't know, I have to go back tomorrow. It's blurry, I feel like it's blurry constantly.
They said it's really hard for people to do those bifocals.
Bifocal.
I'm just about ready for bifocals.
No, it's actual bifocal. Each eye, so it's like, yeah. But I still can't see. Soon in months? All right. They live right behind me. They live right behind me, Switz. I went to high school with them. It was fun.
Okay, Mrs. Powers, I think you have them all. Thank you, everybody, for coming in tonight, and thanks for your patience. We have run into a seating capacity issue over the years as our board meetings have evolved, and Mrs. Powers has done a great job bringing the principals and their staff and students in and all the building highlights. And we were reminded by the city a few weeks ago that there is a capacity limit here, and we can't have people standing in the aisles. So, we appreciate your patience, that you came a little bit later, and that you waited for us out in the lobby, and now the city has put the TV monitor out there, so that's helped a little bit. So, again, thank you for your patience. I'd like to turn things back over to Mrs. Powers, so we can recognize those from RBC.
Thank you, Mr. Stouver, and my thanks as well. I know that we made some adjustments, and we usually now have the older students and their families come about 7:30. That allows us to have the little ones receive recognition and off to an early bedtime, and then the older students are here a little bit later. So, thank you for working with us, and we always appreciate the city allowing us to use their room, but we have to be mindful of the rules and making sure that it's safe as well as a great place to meet, so thank you for that. This evening, we have some Outstanding Students of the Month from RB Chamberlain Middle School, so I'd like to present them to you at this point. And it says here, "Students receiving the honor of Student of the Month from RB Chamberlain Middle School are recognized for meeting all six of the criteria listed below. Each student has to meet all six criteria in all of their classes, as the grade level teams decide upon two boys and two girls to be selected each month from each grade." And here are the criteria. These wonderful students show respect and consideration for others, show enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities, exert a positive influence on their classmates, exhibit leadership skills, exhibit patriotism and democratic principles, and show responsibility such as being punctual to class and completing all of their assignments on time. So, the following students have been selected this month by their respective teaching teams at our middle school. And students, as your names are called, if you would please come forward, be careful on the step, and come up and please shake hands with Mrs. Davis. She has a nice pin for you from our Board of Education. And then, of course, Mr. King is here representing the middle school this evening, and Mr. Reese. And then, Mr. King has a nice certificate for you. If you could remain up here in front of the table, and then, once all the names are called, we'll have a chance for a nice group photo for your families. So, to begin, our seventh grade students, we have Ryan Roach. Alyssa Deeds. Trinity Wade. And A.J. Switz. Moving on to our upperclassmen, our eighth graders, Amari Williams. Tommy McMullin. Kamari Walker. And Jake McLumphy. Please join me in congratulating our Students of the Month from RB Chamberlain Middle School. We'll just pause up here for one second while your parents have an opportunity to take a nice photo of everybody. Parents, I just want to tell you, I had the opportunity to be at the middle school, I think it was last week, when we had our statewide fire, rather tornado drill. I was so proud of our middle school students. I was there the first day of the school year, and then back in and out throughout the year. And it's been so fun this year to watch the students just grow and become, you know, young teenagers, and guys, we're just so proud of you. Middle school is such an interesting and exciting place, and you're growing so fast, and you're getting involved in so many things. So, to have this kind of recognition, and your parents are here to celebrate with you this evening, I just want to let you know how proud I am, and you're great Tigers and you're great representatives of the middle school, so thank you for all that you do. Thanks, guys, you may be seated.
Next up, I'd like to invite Mr. Randall Lanu and the RBC Singers up to the stage. As you guys have been reading in the Twinsburg Bulletin, RBC Singers, along with GE, continue victory after victory in the show choir world, and they have been doing amazing things under Mr. Lanu's leadership, with incredible talent provided for by our students. Take it away, RBC.
Hello, I'm Clark Sees.
And I'm Grace Deville.
We are some of the eighth graders of RBC Singers.
And here are some of the other eighth graders.
I'm Leah Bavinette.
I'm Leah Bavinette.
I'm Oka Pagano.
I'm David Stauffer.
I'm Daniel Coppers.
I'm Clark Sees.
I'm Grace Deville.
I'm Kate Carlson.
I'm Bella Yee.
I'm Anna Widmer.
I'm Trinity Lehman.
I'm Hannah Burns.
We are here tonight because we were undefeated this season. We won the Solen competition and the DeKalb, Indiana competition.
We would like to thank the Board of Education for supporting the RBC Singers this year and in the future.
You're very welcome, and I have to ask, what was your favorite trip?
Solen. Solen.
I stumped them. Guys, nicely done, very nicely done, everybody.
You know, Mr. Lanu is just such a talented, talented member of our staff, and our students are just cut above the rest. It is so much fun. If you haven't been to our show choir performances of either RBC Singers, GE, or the new Mood Swingers, you just can't help but enjoy yourself when you go to our performances, and the hardware that they always bring back is phenomenal. We're going to have to build some more trophy cases for our talented choral groups, because they come back practically every time, just grand champions and such great enthusiasm. And I can't let this go, Mr. Stouver, without thanking our Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters, many of which are here this evening. Talk about a hard-working bunch of parents and supportive of our students and supportive of our school district, and I would just want to thank our TVMB for going above and beyond. You're everywhere, doing everything. I had another email this evening, or yesterday, from Mrs. Widmore, more stuff happening on behalf of our kids, so I do appreciate all that our parents do to support our kids, and it's all about the talent. So, thank you, Mr. Lanu and Dr. Hamler, who's not here this evening, for the work behind the scenes, supportive of our parents, and of course, it's all about our kids. Congratulations on a great season. We look forward to seeing you all either back at RBC next year or a part of GE next year, too. A lot of great things happening in our vocal music program. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. You're certainly welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you need to go, now would be the time to go ahead and depart from the rooms. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Is there anything else under superintendent's report tonight?
There is not, thank you.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Welker, before I move on? Next on the agenda are committee reports, and I think I would like to lead tonight with our CBCC report. We'll let Mr. Curtis go first because I know we have some other committee reports. Mark, it looks like you came straight from the baseball field, so thank you very much for making some time for us this evening.
You've got it, yes. It is baseball season, so I didn't have to apologize for my tire. Thank you. Very short report tonight, especially in regards to student recognitions. We're in the midst of the season where there are a lot of competitions going on, much of which I already reported earlier. So the outcome of when our kids go to Florida, I'll be able to report, you know, how they do. But the Health Occupation Students of America State Competition took place Saturday, March 14th. And two, there were actually 11 kids that came out of that group to qualify for Nationals. Two of the 11 were Twinsburg students, where they're going to go on to the national competition in Anaheim, California. The two students are Desiree Cotton and Rochelle Carey. So that's a student update, but I do have other updates. We had a student job fair that took place on the 19th March, and we had nearly 500 students show up to participate. A little bit over 50 organizations from across our communities were there. Students applied and interviewed for seasonal employment, internships, and volunteer opportunities, and there were many who were hired on the spot when they interviewed. So I don't have specific numbers relative to how many kids were Twinsburg. I tried. They don't disaggregate the data that way, but the attendance was great, and I actually happened to be there on that day for other business, and the parking lot was full, people coming in and out, so great turnout. The other piece that I wanted to update on is we did have our Vision 8 meeting. I was not able to be there at the last minute, unfortunately, but Steve was able to be there to represent the board, as well as Mrs. Powers and Chamber of Commerce. And we talked about some things, you know, just some common goals that we need to work toward, and also some overviews of what we've currently accomplished with respect to just Twinsburg and the CBCC and some of the things that we'd like to see. So very general in that regard. The last, actually not the last thing, one of the most important things was Ramtech groundbreaking that happened yesterday. I was super excited to see the turnout, and more importantly, Kathy and Rob, it was Gracie and you guys there, it meant a lot to see you guys representing Twinsburg, so I really appreciate it. Those that, if you weren't able to be there, you missed a great event. Just some numbers. 250 were there for the lunch. 150 were there for the actual groundbreaking ceremony, which actually preceded the lunch. Eight mayors, five state legislators, and eight chambers of commerce were represented within that group. A number of superintendents as well from the school districts were there as well, but it was awesome. So again, I appreciate you turning out. The next big event will be the grand opening, which we are shooting for January 2016. Kathy, you know how construction goes. We're hoping to stay on that timeline. That's our goal, to open our doors for January 2016, so hopefully we'll be inviting you for the grand opening at that time. Last but not least, I want to give you an update on the House bill legislation as it relates to my rotating seat. Now, as you remember previously, I've reported on this, there was some activity in committee. The bill never made it out of committee at that time, and it died. It has been reintroduced, and it is in the governor's current pledge bill right now. It is House Bill 54. And the primary sponsor is Marlene Inielski. She's the primary sponsor, but there are a number of other representatives on both sides of the aisle who are supportive of this. And actually, she was in attendance at the groundbreaking. I actually had an opportunity to have some conversation with her specific to that, asked her if there was any potential of people not supporting it, or whether there was any potential of it not making it to the governor's desk. She felt strongly that that wouldn't be the case. So if it's signed into law, then my term will be the last of the three-year terms, and it will go to a one-year rotating seat after the expiration of my term. So that concludes my update for committee for CBCC. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to make a common echo. The Ramtech groundbreaking was very instrumental to the region and the number of companies that are supporting this. We heard from Parker, we heard from Allen Bradley. Nobody can seem to pronounce the robotics company FAUNC, but they were talking about, you know, the manufacturing crisis and jobs that we're in right now is coming. This was echoed to me no less than 24 hours later in a client meeting today, that they're talking, and these were other organizations that had no idea about Ramtech. So of course, I said, well, you know, 10 minutes down the road, this just happened. And so this is what's going on nationally, and so this is why this is going to be a very important impact to our community, our region, on jobs. And it's also, you know, reflective of, you know, in House Bill 54, I just want to echo that, you know, it's good to see some movement on the legislation. For those that don't know, you know, the rotating seats, if this was something that did not go through, some of these districts would not see representation for 21 years. That's assuming, you know, we remain the amount of districts we have. So if it's Mr. Curtis, you know, holding that second spot for Twinsburg, that second spot goes to another school, and you can do the, you know, do the math on it, that's, you know, this is potentially a very good thing, this happens, so.
And I appreciate that.
Thanks for talking to Marlene about that yesterday.
Yeah, good, good. So, I mean, and I know, you know, you and Ron know the language, that industry language. And the data that was presented relative to what was revealed in Ohio Means Jobs, the number of unfilled positions in this area is astounding, and for no other reason than we don't have enough people to fill them because they're not skilled in this area. So the extent to which we're going to be able to have the capacity to do that, our kids are going to have opportunities to be placed in high-paying jobs, and I mean high-paying jobs, I mean really, really good paying jobs, really, really good paying jobs.
There were some impressive figures to the tune of, you know, manufacturing jobs.
$60,000, $70,000 a year.
You know, $12 million, you know, in, you know, in jobs, and another $5 million in allied companies. They had a statistics, you know, there was 1,000 unfilled jobs within 30 minutes of CBCC.
Yes.
That was a statistic. They had mentioned a crisis till 2050, and, you know, I corrected, someone who told me it was 2025 today in a meeting, and I go, well, I heard 2050 yesterday.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, either way, we need these jobs, and it's good that, you know, we're preparing the students and excited to see that this is going to be a nice addition to CBCC, not only for, you know, 9 through 12, but there's a lot of adult education that goes on there as well.
Yeah, we're excited, and I'm excited to be a part of it, so thank you very much for your support.
And I just, as I, you know, he had mentioned, we were both there yesterday, and I initially didn't know what to expect. I was amazed by the turnout and just the energy level at the CBCC. They're just, the kids are energized, the staff is energized, and it gave me a better understanding of, you know, manufacturing, these companies have partnered with the school, and they're going to provide instruction to these children, you know, to our children. If they, you know, if they choose to, this isn't, you know, it is a, obviously, something they can do if they want to, and they're going to be able to come out of there with a skill set that's going to make them, you know, employable. And I just, I was impressed with it, and I think it was important to hear, you know, there are options for our kids. There's college-bound students. I do know a family that their son went there and continued on and got his college education and is working in Chicago and doing very, very well. But part of that education that he received was a huge part of what he needed and it helped him be successful. So also just touring the facility, and I did have the opportunity to meet up with all of the Twinsburg kids that are in the culinary arts that are from Twinsburg, and what a great crew. They helped prepare the food, they served it. It was, it went smooth, it was, you know, a well-run event. So kudos to everybody that had a part in that, and I was happy to be there and happy to be a part of it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. That's it.
Anything else? Mark, thanks for your report.
You and Steve for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I know we have several committee reports. I'm going to start on this side of the aisle, and I'll just work our way across. Kate, do you have anything? Oh, we're going to go right over there.
Yes, the Curriculum and Technology Committee met on Monday, and there were several things that were put up for adoption by approval from the board. First off, there was adoption of summer reading lists, and one thing that changed was that the reading time for Wilcox students went from 200 to 300 minutes, so more focus on reading for the Wilcox kiddos. And there were adoptions of three, well, more than three textbooks, but specifically for three AP courses, there was adoption, textbook adoptions for Human Geography AP, AP Human History, and AP Art History, and these courses were approved at the February meeting. And there was also adoption of revised English Language Learner Standards, and these are to begin in the 2015, 2016 school year, so coming up. Some textbooks at Dodge that they're going to seek approval for the 4, 5, 6 grades and for Social Studies, and also Ohio State History Consumable for Grade 4, which is the focus for 4th grade Social Studies. And also My World Geography, Western Hemisphere for Grade 5, and Eastern Hemisphere for Grade 6. Just a couple more things. Let's see. There also is the adoption of Reading Plus. It's an online research-based reading intervention program to be used at RBC. And from what I understood, it's similar to RAS Kids, and it offers text at the students' levels and trains on silent reading, so similar to RAS but more intense for those of you that are the younger students who are using RAS. And then there's also Apex Learning Online Curriculum, and what, that's currently being piloted, if I'm saying this correctly, is in the Social Studies courses at TAP, and we need to, I guess there's further comparison and research to the A-plus program at NELA. Science and math needed before final decisions made, so not quite ready for voting at the curriculum meeting on Monday, but there's going to be an online, well, email vote coming up in May. And that's the end and short of it.
Kate, anything you want to add? You've got it. Very good. Thank you. All right, we'll just keep coming this way.
All right, well, the finance committee met, and while it was a long meeting, I can keep my report fairly short. The committee has reviewed the academic and pay-to-participate fees. That is going to be reviewed in more detail by the entire board, but with minimal changes to those fees to date, and again, that's going to be something that we're going to see at a future date. We've started some discussions regarding some other energy provisions, and we have a special presenter that's going to tell us a little bit about item I-10 in your agenda, and bring out your sample, Mr. Welker, and we're going to talk a little bit about clean diesel. Go ahead.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Felber. We're very excited to present later in the agenda the HPCD Purchase Agreement. It's a new green initiative that we're hoping to evaluate at Twinsburg City School District, where EcoChem has a diesel fuel cleaning process that they guarantee will improve our fuel economy by over 10%. The process is also projected to reduce the maintenance costs of our fleet and will have a green impact of emitting approximately 238,000 less pounds of CO2 each year. At the end of the process, our hope is that our fuel will look as clean as a star. But I don't know if anyone wants to try to drink it, but, to me, it looks like apple juice, but we'll never drink that, so. And then, the process has been used in a number of districts, including Berea City School District and Dublin City School District, and they've seen results that have exceeded 10% for their miles per gallon. And we've been able to negotiate an agreement that allows us to try this new process throughout the end of the year to ensure that we see similar results and that those results are guaranteed through the agreement. So it's really a low-risk opportunity for us to not only have a green impact, but it will also save dollars in our fuel costs.
Thank you, Mr. Welker. You know, pun intended, there's a lot of moving parts, and I know, you know, colleague very to your immediate left has called them the yellow limousines, but, you know, again, what are the numbers, Mrs. Powers? You know, something like 3,000 miles?
A day.
A day.
Right.
And, you know, with as many students as we have, and anything we can do to reduce our carbon footprint, and at the same time, this particular agreement has a lot of detail. I want to just thank Mr. Welker again. Lot of thought goes into these contracts to make sure we're protected and that we're doing right by our equipment, and a lot of i's dotted and t's crossed, so I appreciate for the extra effort on that. And with that, that concludes the finance meeting. Unless I forget anything, too.
No, I think the only thing I would add is that at the finance meeting, Mr. Welker actually had two samples. He had a sample of the current, what the diesel would look like being pumped into the buses, and then the clean sample that he held up there. And if there was any doubt in your mind that we needed to look at doing something to address cleaning the fuel, that doubt was erased when you saw both samples. So in addition to a project that we will have to address the tank and just, you know, residue that's in the tank, there will be this contract that we will consider later in the agenda that will allow us to pursue what looked like a very low-risk opportunity here with a potential for high return. So thank you for your work on that.
Mr. Stuber, if I can just add on to that, you know, Chad's only been here seven months, and the initiatives that he has brought to our school district have been just phenomenal in saving the district additional revenue expenditures, rather, and helping us to maintain healthy revenue streams, always looking for the next grant opportunity. This is just one of these examples. He heard about this through Ohio Schools Council, did a lot of research behind it, talked to Dublin, talked to Berea, talked to the OSC again, making sure that our contract is as solid as it can be. And we hope at the next board meeting to bring you the next initiative. We continue to look at other opportunities to embed into our daily operations, energy conservation. So this is, you know, just the next step. There will be more to follow, and I'm just really appreciative of Chad's presence here on our administrative team. He's doing a great job for you and for our community.
I concur, and tonight, he's sitting, maybe not in the treasurer's actual seat, but with the treasurer's duties as the secretary of the meeting, so he's wearing multiple hats tonight, so thank you for pinch hitting as well.
Thank you.
I conclude the finance.
Thank you. And Kathy, your turn.
Okay. We did have a Buildings and Grounds meeting last evening, and my list is really long, but I'm just going to cover the highlights because some of them are repetitive from previous meetings. Some of the big ones are the parking lot renovations. Due to the extreme weather we had over the winter, some of the parking lots just did not hold up. So one of the big ones is going to be in front of RBC, which is scheduled to happen June and July before Twinsdays, and we're going to be completely, if I'm understanding correctly, removing the current parking lot, doing some subwork underneath where the ground is. Looks like there may be some issues with some of the foundation, and then we're going to be repaving that. Also, another big one is over at Wilcox. We're going to be expanding the entryway to three lanes, and as long as the city, it can work for the city. And then we're looking at some sidewalk renovations and the circle where the bus turns. The Twinsburg Bus Band Parking Lot, we're going to be doing some renovations on there, and that will be after the Cost of Freedom and before the Twins Days. So...
So I commend Chad and Kathy. They, you know, it's hard because not only do they have to get bids for these jobs, but they also have to time it because we have such good relationships with so many different organizations. We have to time it so that these facilities are available and usable when we have these events. So additionally, it looks like some of the areas at Bissell, we're looking at potentially at some point, may, maybe not necessarily this year, but looking at some different ways of managing the traffic for the parents as well as the buses. So Chad is working on some ideas that way. Our outdoor lighting projects, we're looking at several buildings and how we're going to be lighting them and what the payback will be on that. And what the payback means is if we are getting more economical lighting and better lighting, it will pay us back with less of the expenses in electrics. So, once again, we've done that in, I know at, at the high school, and it was very beneficial. So we're looking at in different areas. Additionally, we are looking at some hot water tank concerns at RBC. And so obviously, we have to keep up on the day-to-day, you know, some of these things just wear out and it's time. So some of our bigger, you know, hot water tanks and boilers and things, we're looking at. We're looking at the swimming pool renovations, which I've spoken before, tennis court renovations, transportation vehicles. We keep rotating buses in and out so that we are not having to purchase, you know, a lot of buses at once. So there is rotation on that. There's also a rotation on computers and equipment at all the schools, so we keep those up to date and current. In technology, we are going to be installing a district core switch upgrade and just some other general technologies. And then obviously, just miscellaneous, as doors and things need to be repaired, cameras, food service equipment. And we are still currently working on the Facilities Assessment, which is basically a general assessment of all of our facilities in the school district. And I know it is a huge project that they've been working on, still in the works, still getting there. We're also still looking at doing the turf at the stadium. We did have an opportunity to meet with one of the vendors last night, looking at different installations, understanding the installation process, different options in carpets, different options in colors and things. So that still is a work in progress as well. But other than that, yeah, lots of expenditures coming up. I believe that we'll probably have to have a meeting, you know, prior, one more meeting to really finalize some of these things because some of these are some pretty big expenditures. I did, after I got home last night, had a little bit of sticker shock because, you know, some of these things are, are large, large expenditures. So we have to obviously be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're doing the things that need to be done in a prioritized way that, you know, are necessary, and then work our way down. So, that completes my report.
Only thing I would add was, just, Mrs. Powers, to confirm, there will be a meeting in May that I think you were planning on scheduling an administrative report regarding the Facilities Assessment to do an admin report sometime in May. Is that right?
That is correct. The first meeting in May.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Kathy. And Kate, anything from your side? Good? All right. Before I move off of committee reports, just one more time from our administrators, Kathy, Chad, anything from your side? Very good.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda then is remonstrance. I do have one card tonight, as is our practice. We have blue cards that we, we have two cards tonight. We do have blue cards that we ask people to fill out and submit. And as a reminder, the purpose of the regular meetings of the Board of Education is to conduct business. And because the Board represents the school district, which is a public organization, these business meetings are required to be conducted in public. These regular business meetings are different from other community forums or special meetings, which are conducted with the specific intent to engage with and encourage active, interactive discussion with the community. To accommodate public participation as part of the regular business meetings, an agenda item called "Remonstrance Is Included," and the conduct for remonstrance is provided for in the Board of Education Bylaw, specifically Section 0169. Persons wishing to speak during remonstrance are asked to provide their name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Comments should be limited to five minutes, and the total time for public participation is limited to 30 minutes. While statements regarding matters of general district policy or procedures are appropriate, statements should not be personally directed, nor abusive, nor should statements be made regarding specific disciplinary matters involving students or staff. To address such concerns regarding student disciplinary matters or staff performance, the Board requests that you submit such concerns in writing to the superintendent. At this time, I will go with Mr. Lou, is it Masinski? Yeah, I would ask you to please step up to the podium. And if you could, please, just your name, address, and any group affiliation.
I live 9348 Gettysburg Drive. I have two kids from a Twinsburg School District. And I have a couple of quick questions, and I would love to hear your answer. But first, I would like to know if all of you are aware of the rapidly growing drug and alcohol problem in our school system? And at what point is something done about it before something serious has happened to these kids?
One thing I would say, sir, is this is not an interactive discussion.
Okay.
If you have some facts that you would like to present about some specific issues, it would be much more appropriate that you schedule a meeting with the superintendent. It's not that this matter isn't important. It's very sensitive, and if we get into a discussion like that here in a public setting, it would be inappropriate because it might ferret out information about students, which is not appropriate for a public setting.
I wasn't gonna mention any names, but if you tell me how to go about this, I'll be happy to.
I, I would be more than happy to, sir. And I think it would be most appropriate if, when we get through the agenda and we break to go to executive session, if you and Mrs. Powers could just exchange contact information, I think it would be very appropriate for you to sit down with her and have such a discussion. And again, it's not that the Board and the administration doesn't take a comment like that seriously, but because it might become something personal in nature, and it is definitely something that, that could result in, in other disciplinary action, it has to be handled in a private manner.
Fair enough.
Okay? So if you would, please, if you could just stick with us for a few minutes, we'll get through the agenda, and then I would ask that you connect with Mrs. Powers.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Jenny Dawes and Bill Han, who I think wish to address the Board regarding Relay for Life.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to speak before you this evening. And we're here to talk about Relay for Life. This is an annual event, as you know, held at their Twinsburg Tiger Stadium. This year is June 6th, one day. Normally, it's a two-day event, but this time, it's a one-day event. And I'd like Liz, Jenny Dawes, excuse me, to explain a little bit more about how, how this works.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for having a few minutes with us tonight. Relay for Life this year is, we have some veterans on the school board, Rob Felber, who has led the relay and is responsible for getting me involved. It is going to be-
No accusatory statement.
That's right. It'll be noon to midnight this year. We're hoping to pack the track with families. Everybody from the community is welcome. Members of the community who have had experience with cancer, either as caregivers, family members, or survivors often come up, and it's just a big celebration. And while we do raise a lot of money, we focus on keeping people informed about what the American Cancer Society does with the relay funds, including helping a great many people in Summit County with a whole range of services that many people may not be aware of, such as rides to cancer treatments if they cannot afford or otherwise don't have a ride to those treatments, special hotlines for children, family members who need information or just want support, wigs, wig programs, makeover feel-good programs for women. It's still an entire range of things. So what we'd really like to do is invite the schools to participate again. The schools have been extremely supportive. We're very pleased to be working at the stadium again this year, and, and Mr. Walker has been really tremendous in helping us sort all that out. And just invite everyone up to the stadium and invite the school board and teachers, everybody, parents, to get involved. And Bill's gonna give you some ideas on how to do that.
If I may pass out some information to each one of you. Mr. Stuber, President, if you-
I would be happy to.
Take an envelope and then-
I would be happy to do that.
Pass that to, from what I appreciate it.
I'd love to say that there's a team meeting tomorrow night at the Twinsburg Public Library at 6:45. For anyone who'd like to come and find out how you could form a team or what teams are, are doing to raise money. We have everything from purple potties to, you name it, we've got it all. And we are happy to help teams raise funds and have a great time doing it.
Each of you has a envelope, a personal envelope. If you'd open that right now, I'd appreciate it. I would like everyone to know that my wife, Linda Han, and myself would consider it a great honor, if you so choose, to put together a team. We would be most happy to be on your team.
Why wait if I already have my team set up?
I understand, Mr. Felber. We would still be happy to be on the team, but I think what we're trying to say here is we'd be happy to do that. I can't promise you we would run with every team around the track, but we'd be happy to walk around the track. But hopefully, this would work for you. And if you so choose to put together a team, we certainly would be happy to see that done. Or if you wish to pass that on to someone else, that would be fine, too. So, thank you very much.
Bill, I've participated in Relay both here and in several other communities, and I have to say, this is a very unique and the first time I've ever seen someone try to recruit teams in this way. Well, well done.
And how many years has it been?
This is the 15th anniversary today.
Wow.
It's a big birthday.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Kate, you're on my team. Next on the agenda, we will move to Agenda Item G, which is our Treasurer's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Walker, just out of chance, do you have anything that has been reported from Mr. Aho to you tonight?
No, I do not.
Just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Thank you.
That objection, I would like to read Items G1 and 2 together, Consent Agenda. Item G1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, the regular meeting of March 18th, 2015, which was sent to the Board under separate cover. And Item G2, that the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District, Summit County, resolves that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in its Certification B and the same are hereby accepted, and be it further resolved that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of the said school district, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as per the attached. And be it further resolved that the Treasurer of this Board be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Fiscal Officer of said county. Is there a motion for these two agenda items, please?
Some.
Moved by Mr. Felber, a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. I'll just make note, and I don't know that I'll do justice, as Mr. Aho might do, but for Item G2, what this resolution really is saying is that the Board in its action tonight is accepting the information that has been presented by the Budget Commission of the Summit County Fiscal Office. And again, the word is accepted. We are hereby accepting this information. In Schedule A of the resolution, it shows the amounts that are derived by fund. So we're talking about the bond fund, the general operating fund, the permanent improvement fund. And in Schedule B, it defines the actual effective millage per levy and the actual estimated amounts per the valuation in our community that will be received in total. So this resolution is something that comes around annually. You'll see this every year about this time. And Mr. Aho, I know, although he couldn't be here tonight, was very diligent in making sure that Mrs. Powers and Mr. Walker knew that this agenda item needed to be added. And because it's something that I've talked to Mr. Aho about in the past, it was my duty to go ahead and try to explain it. So if I had misstated anything, Mr. Aho can correct it, but I think I've got it on the nail. So, are there any other comments regarding these two agenda items? Roll call, please, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tara Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Perfectly done. Next on the agenda, under H are our action items for personnel. And again, without objection, I would like to read, read these three together as Consent Agenda. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item H2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And Item H3, that the Board of Education accepts supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H3, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for these three agenda items, please?
Come up.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell and second by Ms. Davis. Just in discussion, I would like to highlight a couple of retirees that we have showing here. And I know this one just hit Mrs. Powers' desk, I think just yesterday. But I would like to just recognize Mr. Dave Stebbins, who is a teacher at THS, one of our language teachers, and he's been with the district for 24 years. And would like to wish him a happy retirement. And also, under the classified, we have a bus driver, Kathleen Kohler, who is retiring after 25 years to the district. So I would like to recognize both of those retirees. Are there any other comments or discussion regarding personnel? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tara Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. For those who don't know, there's actually a process, an order in which the votes are called. And it's something that Mr. Aho knows very well from a parliamentary procedure perspective. And I have to say, Mr. Walker, you nailed it twice nicely done.
Two for two.
One for two for two.
Probably just jinxed it. Next on the agenda is our new business. These are action items under Agenda I. There are 10 that I would like to read together, Consent Agenda, without objection. Item I1, that the Board of Education approves the attached listing of items to be deleted from inventory. This is regarding the Media Center items listed in Exhibit I1. Item I2, that the Board of Education approves the attached listing of items to be deleted from inventory. These are Technology Department items listed in Exhibit I2. Item I3, that the Board of Education approves the adoptions of the Revised English Language Learner Standards. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum and Technology Committee at their meeting on March 30th, 2015, sent to the Board under separate cover. I may need that English Language Learners myself. I4, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases an online subscription to LJ Create, a cloud-based exploring STEM K through 12 license for the pre-engineering course offered at RB Chamberlain Middle School. The proposal is for $4,500. And again, this was approved by the Curriculum Committee, March 30th meeting. Item I5, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases the Ohio State History Consumable for the 4th grade Social Studies at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. The proposal is for $27,413.28 for the additions that include a total of six years. This adoption was also approved by the Curriculum Committee on March 30th and forwarded on to the Board. I6, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases Reading Plus, which is an online learning subscription for 7th and 8th grade. The proposal is for $6,000, and the adoption was also approved by the District Curriculum Committee on their March 30th meeting. I7, that the Board of Education adopts the summer reading requirements for the summer of 2015. This adoption was also approved at the Curriculum and Technology Meeting held on March 30th. Item I8, that the Board of Education accepts the donation of an enclosed 2015 RC cargo trailer, which is valued at $12,087. This donation is coming from the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters. Item I9, that the Board of Education approves the City of Twinsburg Parks and Recreation Department to utilize the yellow school buses for spring break camp between April 6th through the 10th, 2015. The City of- The City of Twinsburg will compensate the Twinsburg Board of Education for the use of the buses, including mileage and gas. Twinsburg City School District bus drivers must be used and compensated by the City of Twinsburg. And finally, Item I10, that the Board of Education approves the HPCD Purchase Agreement with Echo Chem Alternative Fuels of Dublin, Ohio, for the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement which was sent to the board under separate cover. This agreement will convert commercial-grade diesel into a more efficient, low-emission diesel fuel known as high-performance clean diesel, thus creating a lower carbon footprint and is guaranteed to improve the transportation fleet's miles-per-gallon performance by at least 10 percent. And this is a general fund expense. Is there a motion for these 10 agenda items, please?
Some of them.
Moved by Mr. Felber, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Further discussion on these items?
You're not going to tackle serial number, are you?
I am not.
Vehicle serial numbers in the agenda.
I would just like to thank the curriculum committee, both the members that are here as well as all the people that attend and assist and as far as your staff for working so hard to keep us up to date on all of this. And Mr. Welker, we already said it, but you really are out there looking and looking under rocks and shaking trees. And Item I10 is what you spoke of before with the clean diesel fuel, not something that was on our radar before, but it is something that per what you have brought to our attention is certainly needed. So I appreciate the opportunity to try this out and I hope that we get the results that we're expecting.
Hope so, too.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tera Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. And those 10 agenda items pass 5-0. Next, we have a series of items still under our business under Agenda Item I. This is Items I11 through 19. And without objection, I would like to read these together, consent agenda. Item I11, that the Board of Education adopts the Western Heritage Since 1300, 11th Edition, AP Edition textbook for the AP European History course offered at Twinsburg High School. Single copy cost is $115.47. Purchase of the textbooks will be made during the summer after the master course schedule has been set. The adoption was approved by the district curriculum and technology committee at their March 30th meeting. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. Item I12, the Board of Education adopts the Cultural Landscape and Introduction to Human Geography textbook for AP Human Geography course offered at Twinsburg High School. Single copy cost is $138.47. Again, purchase of the textbooks will be made during the summer after the master course schedule has been set. The adoption was approved by the curriculum committee at their March 30th meeting. Also a permanent improvement expenditure. Item I13, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases human geography textbooks to be used as a class reference set for the AP Human Geography course offered at Twinsburg High School. The proposal is for $3,048.16 and the adoption was approved by the curriculum committee at their March 30th meeting, also a permanent improvement expenditure. Item I14, that the Board of Education adopts the Art History 5th Edition textbook for the AP Art History course offered at Twinsburg High School. Single copy cost is $138.97. Purchase of the textbooks, again, will be made during the summer after the master course schedule has been set and the adoption was approved by the curriculum committee on their March 30th meeting, another permanent improvement expense. And I will summarize to say that all of these are permanent improvement expenses, which is why they were separated. Item I15, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases My World Geography Western Hemisphere textbook for the 5th grade social studies at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Proposal is for $27,703.78. This was approved by the curriculum committee at their March 30th meeting. Item I16, that the Board of Education adopts and purchases My World Social Studies Eastern Hemisphere textbook for the 6th grade social studies at Dodge Intermediate. The proposal is for $29,473.79. The adoption was approved by the curriculum committee at their March 30th meeting. Item I17, that the Board of Education approves a purchase agreement for Twinsburg network upgrades, including the district core switch with CDW Government, which is located in Vernon Hills, Illinois, for the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. Item I18, that the Board of Education authorizes the Director of Business Services to sell a trailer that was used by the vocal music department that has been determined to be no longer needed for school purposes since the vocal music boosters have purchased a new trailer. Trailer will be posted on an online auction site, Business Movers &amp; More, which is a company located in Euclid, Ohio. The net proceeds of this sale will be returned to the permanent improvement fund. And finally, Item I19, that the Board of Education approves a change order from Lorne Building Company of Chagrin Falls for the purpose of the new computer labs that were installed at Dodge Intermediate School and at Twinsburg High School. The credit is for $595. This change order number 12 compensates the district for owner-provided key cylinder cores. This credit will be reimbursed to the permanent improvement funds. Is there a motion for these agenda items, please?
Some moved.
Moved by Ms. Tera Waldron, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. And I think it was clear, but I'm going to ask Mr. Welker to just comment on the change order on Item I19 again. It is in fact a credit, but just wanted you to provide some color commentary on that one, please.
Sure. So that is our final change order for the computer labs. We had a filization of our key cylinder cores with Lorne Building Company and we wound up as a district purchasing the key cylinder cores and then they credited us for the amount that was in the contract of $595. So that's what that change order is.
Thank you. And I guess thanks to the vocal music boosters for what they've done with the trailer, the donation and the sale of that trailer and then the replacement. That's wonderful and just a thanks to the folks that are behind all of that. Anything else, any comments or other discussion?
I just want to kind of plug what Dr. Lisa Regal presented last night, the Your Child's Brain Uncharted Territory. I just thought it was one of the, I don't want to say one of the best, but probably, well, one of the best ones, presentations I've seen in anything related to brain and psychology just really fascinates me. But there wasn't a lot of technical jargon that you couldn't follow and there was just a great wealth of information. If you didn't attend the first one, it's not like you'll be lost going to the second one. I encourage you really to just come to that one because it really helps explain different things with your children with developmental stages, so you realize, no, it's not just me, I'm not going crazy. And just common behaviors and aptitudes and attitudes with your children and just explaining different parts of the brain and why your kids do some of the things they do and study, along with study habits and behaviors. And there was lots of time for sharing and interaction and of your thoughts and ideas and, like I said, it was just very fascinating and I encourage anybody to just really come to the second one. And like I said, she's going to pick up kind of where we left off, but you're not going to be lost if you didn't show up at the first one. So very good presentation. The second one is going to be April 16th, so coming up in just a few weeks. Just a couple of quick questions about the textbooks and as far as the expenditures on that, do we, do the Dodge students use the online books or do they use the actual physical textbooks? And do we use a consortium or anything to try to shop around and get better pricing on those? Actually, Ms. Tera Waldron, this is a long process. Last year, we invested in the guided reading for the students at Dodge. It was implemented this year and with the new standards, we knew that there was the need to update our textbooks. So the staff at Dodge has been behind the scenes and piloting different versions of different books and recommendation came to the curriculum committee that these were the ones that fit the needs of our teachers and our kids the best. There are options for online learning on all the textbooks that we purchased now. You can tell by the price of these books, it's a kind of an amazing thing. I was thinking as Mr. Stuber was reading the agenda this evening, what I paid for a college textbook wasn't anywhere near what a price of a textbook is today. It's an amazing amount of money. And so because of that, our staff takes a long time in making sure that this is exactly what we need for the purpose of educating our kids. I appreciate that. Yeah, like I said, I had once again a little bit of a sticker shock on those two items and just wanted to see if, you know, and I appreciate that our staff does, you know, do the research and just making sure that we're getting our most bang for our buck.
I think the question is an interesting question because over the years I've heard people ask about, you know, hard textbooks versus online. And I think the thing to remember is that these companies that produce this material, it's not the book itself, it's the intellectual property that they're really selling. So even if you were to buy something online, you're still going to have to pay a price for it. And I think there is a, and I know this wasn't your question, but I've heard this from community members in the past, well, why don't you just go online because they think, oh, it's free? And the answer is no, it's not free. The only thing you do is save the copy of the actual text, but intellectual property is worth something to these companies that put these things together. So yeah, it is a lot of money, but I think we're talking about a whole grade of students for a period of time.
Well, not only, to build on that, not only is it intellectual property, but the production costs really, you know, I don't know exactly how they compare, but maintaining the type of online presence of the textbooks is probably, you know, comparable in expense to the production of books.
And I know you've been involved in that professionally, so.
Yeah, and I think too, the other thing, just, Ms. Tera Waldron, you haven't served on the curriculum committee yet or haven't had the opportunity?
No.
Generally, most of our books are 10 years old before we replace them. So our average, you know, shelf life is probably too old.
Sure.
In my estimation, the pace at which information is changing. But last, last we talked about it, Ms. Waldron, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, the shelf life is about 10 years for most of our textbooks.
And then as it is, the books that we purchased 10 years ago, now we've got a lot of online supplemental learning tools that you can use with the textbooks as well that not just the, not just saying, or not an online book, but things to go along with the lessons that are interactive and in addition to what they're using in the classroom. Right. And I guess, you know, that's another reason I asked the question is, you know, it seems like if we are using an online source that it's going to help keep it more, you know, it's going to keep it current, it's going to keep it fresh and, you know, the kids have access at, you know, at home. I do know that my kids, you know, they're in high school, but they do appreciate the online books because they're not mugging the things around, they're able to get onto the computer and have the access to, you know, what they need without, you know, the bulk, so.
We need to be cognizant that not everybody has the access.
Oh, absolutely.
So having a printed resources-
Absolutely.
-just as available.
But you're right, though, too, that the cool thing about the, you know, digital footprint is that it's updatable, you know, right now, so we don't have to spend, hopefully right now it's free.
Right.
And we also have to keep in mind that sometimes the curriculum that we are designing and the text that we want may not be available in an online format.
Yeah, sure.
So sometimes it's just a balance.
Okay.
Very good. Any other discussion or comments? Good stuff. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tera Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes. Thank you. And those items pass 5-0. Brings us to miscellaneous. I'll start with our administrators. Anything under miscellaneous tonight, Mrs. Powers and Mr. Welker?
We just wish everyone a very safe and happy spring break. Students are very much looking forward to it as well as our staff, so good luck and have a great time.
Great. Any comments miscellaneous from the boards?
I just wanted to thank the representatives because I have to for Relay for Life as a past chair, but also, you know, the history that this district has with Relay for Life, Mr. Lenzel in his term, Mr. Welker's predecessor with regard to facilities, just tremendous support, having complete use of Tiger Stadium and schools for emergency backup. It's a big event. It's been, you know, as large as several thousand people in the past, so I encourage you to come out. My team's already open for members, but I think Mr. Han did find a very creative way to get our attention. So I would encourage those listening and watching at home to come out, even if you're not on a team, it's always an open event. There's concessions and it's a fun time.
Anything else? Thank you. We do have need for executive session this evening. I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:46 PM to discuss employment and compensation of employees per Board of Education policy 0166, Paragraph A. Is there a second for this motion, please? Second by Mr. Felber. Just to note that there will not be any action taken after this executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tera Waldron?
Yes.
Okay, the board will now move to executive session. I would like to thank everybody for their attendance tonight.
Good job, Ted. Trying to trip you up.
You came in every scenario.